Okay, I am calling to order the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, June 17th. It is seven o'clock and the meeting is being recorded by Lake Cam. In accordance with the provisions allowed by S point two, four, seven, five, chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by the governor on June 16th. The June 17th public meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake. You don't need a Facebook account and the meeting is being recorded and can be viewed later at lakecam.tv. So our first agenda item is the petition for the Klein de Silva hearing. Do we have someone representing or actually Klein de Silva on the call at this point before I?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Okay, so I apologize, I need to get out of what I'm in only because I needed to revise. We needed to revise my opening statement due to the governor just signing in the new provision yesterday. So, okay, the Lakeville zoning board of appeals, acting in accordance with master general law, chapter 40A as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 17th at seven o'clock to hear the petition of Heidi Klein de Silva for a special permit under six point one point three point seven and seven point quarter request. There's a request to remove an existing 19 by 12 three season room and replace it with a three season room that is the same size and will be in the same footprint as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 45 Shore Ave. So, um, why don't you walk us through what you're looking to do, Heidi?
Okay, um, what I'm looking to do is remove the existing screen porch that's there and just replace it with the same size, but you know, better construction. Right now it's in poor shape.
Okay.
Um, and the same, there's a pad, cement pad there that I'm going to put it back on and I'm not going to make it any larger or any smaller, it's just going to be the same.
So to sum it up, you're just looking to put the same size, same impact that you currently have there, but just update it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, let me just read a couple of memos from a couple of other boards and then I'll open it up to the other members on our board. The Board of Health, Ed Cullen sent a memo dated June 9th. Based on the information provided to the Board of Health, there is no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial to 45 Shore Ave. The other memo we have is from the planning board. At their Thursday, June 10th meeting, excuse me, this memo was dated June 15th. At the Thursday, June 10th, 2021 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board had no comments regarding this petition. So, seems pretty simple to me, but I'm only one person. Do we have any questions or comments from other board members? Chris Carmichael.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's no increase in the footprint, then they're not expanding the nonconformity and it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood?
I completely agree. So, let me, just give me a second before I ask for a motion. I just want to make sure that we don't have any, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, do we have any one on Facebook or anyone else on this meeting that is looking to speak or comment?
I have nothing on Facebook.
Okay, having said that, Chris, I'll, I'll take a motion if you have one.
I'll take the motion to accept this as proposal as written in the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, let's do our roll call vote, yea or nay? Nora?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Chris?
Yes.
Um, I think, you know what, we are missing one board member. So, Chris Campo, you're going to vote on this one as well, yea or nay?
I vote yea.
And I am in favor as well. Motion carries unanimously. Kathy, can you help me out here? Let the petitioner know what's next.
All right, the ZBIA will get the paperwork done within two weeks and it will be submitted to the town clerk. There's a 20 day appeal period. After that passes with no appeals, she'll sign it and you, I'll return it or you can come pick it up and then you'll have to record it at the Plymouth Registry of Deeds and then you can get your building permit.
Okay, so 20, after two weeks, 20 days for people to appeal, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll get notified so I can come to your office and pick it up?
Yep. What I do is usually once it's done and signed, I'll either call you or email you and let you know that it's ready.
Oh, awesome, okay.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, good luck, Heidi.
Thank you very much. So I can just hit the leave button?
Hit the leave button unless you got nothing else to do tonight, you want to watch other hair.
I forgot plenty of jokes, thank you very much.
Take care.
Yep.
Okay, the next item is the Barlow Signs Agent for Domino's hearing for 56 Main Street. So, Lakeville zoning board of appeals, acting in accordance with the master general laws, chapter 40A as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, June 17th at 7:00 PM to hear the petition of Barlow Signs Agent for the tenant Domino's, a special permit under six point six point three point three. Also, six point six point four point five and seven point four is requested to allow an additional sign and directional signs that are greater than two square feet. Property size is 56 Main Street, located in the business zone and owned by 56 Main Street Realty Trust. So, I am assuming at this point that Phil, you will be starting off the presentation for the petitioner? Or are we going right to the sign folks?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Brandon Courier from Barlow Signs. I'm going to be starting off for this evening.
That's fine, Brandon, tell us what you're looking for.
So, good evening, as you all know, this is for Domino's located at 56 Main Street. And I'm in front of you tonight, as you mentioned, seeking special permit approval for the proposed signage. A lot of thought and strategy has gone into this master plan for the new drive up locations. We decided to propose multiple directional signs to help aid the wayfinding public for this unique location. By having these signs placed in their strategic locations, this will help direct traffic around the back as you guys are familiar with, with this location safely to where the window is on the side. Does that, do you guys have the drawings there? Would you like me to pull those up so you can see as I continue to talk through my presentation?
Why don't you share, share the screen with us and that, ease for us to follow what you're?
Okay, can you guys see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. So, items C and D, so this right here is item C, item D are placed around the backside of the building. This will help aid the motorists around the backside. These signs will not be seen from the main road. These signs will only be seen from within the property. As we continue on through here, as we mentioned, this is where the proposed drive up window will be. Item E, you can see down at the bottom, these are directional signs, these are going to be identifying the enter and the exit for, for motorists to safely enter. Next sign here, we're moving to item F. This sign is going to be illuminated internally and as mentioned in a previous meeting, one of the sides, the side actually that we're actually facing in this, in this picture on the drawing is not going to be illuminated because of all the residents behind there. What we're trying to do with this sign here is we're trying to draw traffic from the, from, from Main Street there to enter through this area for pickup, to route safely behind the building so we don't congest the front. As we move here, item H, this is a new sign than what you guys have seen in previous presentations. So this is actually a canopy, this is going to be going over the drive up window. This is something that's specific to most Domino's out there now. You'll see them over sidewalks and so forth, they either come like this or they come as fabric and we chose to go this route because of the motorists that are going to be coming by, the customers. We don't want to have any sort of weather, rain, snow, obviously we're in New England, coming down on them while they're passing money and product through. And then as we noted before, here is the map with all the locations of all the signs. So here you can see on Ebony Farm Road, this is that illuminated sign, only one side of it's illuminated. As you go around the backside here, you come upon item C, which directs you around the corner and then D and H is where the, the canopy sign is and that other blade sign. So we've spoken with the landlord and the client. I know that it's been mentioned about deliveries and trash. It's been made very clear that, that deliveries will not be impeding any of this traffic flow as there's dedicated spots for this. And our client and the landlord has made other tenants aware here that it could be a very aware of trash during deliveries and so forth. So these signs that we have, they're here proposed, they're very critical for this drive up window to help aid the motoring, motors public safely around the backside. We're trying to eliminate congestion here as I mentioned. And these signs are not going to be harm hindrance, they're not going to have any negative effect on any, any sort of, any part of the community. So with that said, we're seeking approval for these, these signs here, thank you.
All right, if you don't mind, I'm sharing the screen, that way we can?
Yep.
Be back. Okay, um, let me read a couple of items into the record and then we'll open it up for questions. Board of Health, same memo dated June 9th. Based on the information, information provided to the Board of Health, there is no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial to 56 Main Street due to public health issues. The planning board has also submitted a memorandum to us dated June 15th. At their Thursday, June 10th meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board recommends the zoning board of appeals not grant relief for the sign proposal. There are also a couple of other letters submitted from the public. I believe everyone on the board has received this information and again, they're somewhat lengthy, so I'm going to not read the entire content of all of the letters into the record, but I will point out that the Woods Edge condominium, folks who are behind the proposed site are not in favor of granting relief for the sign proposal. And again, that's already been submitted, it's on public record. And also, there is a Claire La Pointe from 61 Main Street, who actually has even a more lengthy letter on file. Again, the board has this, that is not in favor of granted relief, so. That takes care of the so-called housekeeping matter. The question I have before I open it up to the, for the board for the questions is, is there a specific reason you need relief for the size of the signs? By right, you can put up the directional and safety signs, et cetera, but it, you know, it appears that you're looking just to have them larger than what is, than what's allowed in our bylaws.
Yeah, so like as you mentioned about the square footage, that's a very small tile and for us to be able to help aid the motoring, motorists public to this location, we need to have something that's going to grab the attention of them trying to find, trying to get to this, this back entrance and so forth, so that's why we decided to go with larger signs. We're not trying to be disrespectful to the bylaws or anything, we just want to make sure that the customers and the other tenants are respected in that property. We're trying to move them safely around the back so they do not interfere with other tenants and so forth.
Questions from other board members?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Nora.
Go ahead, Nora.
Just a couple things and comment to the statement that Brandon just made. I understand about the directional, but it appears in the specs that you have provided us that the Domino's logo portion of the directional sign is actually larger than the directional. And I believe one of the letters provided us with some examples of some other signage from a drive-through from Dunkin' Donuts that does fit the bylaws that makes it more prominent of the direction and what the customer is being directed to. So I'm, I'm not in favor of granting these extra logoed signs that are above the, the directions on these at this point. And then just, just secondly, can, can you give me the square footage on E1 and E2?
You're muted, Bren.
I apologize, that wasn't on there, I'm trying to do a quick calculation for you guys. Each one of those directional comes out to 14 square feet.
14 square feet. And I spent, I spent some time up at the property today and with the amount of signs that are being proposed here, it harkens back to the sign and I'm going to be dating the song and I'm going to be dating myself that says, signs, signs everywhere, signs. It just seems a little bit overbearing on the number of signs that we're asking for here. That's all I have at this time.
Comments or questions from other board members? Chris?
Nora, I think you're spot on. I don't see any compelling reason for like the, the massive increase in directional signage. I think customers are pretty savvy, I, I think they'll find the pickup window no problem and I am 100% not in favor in increasing the square footage for directional signage. I, I think it could be branded with a Domino logo and directional within the two square feet, just like other operations have done in town and I just think it's too much, so I'm not in favor of that.
Other comments or questions from board members?
I think when the person goes, picks up the pizza the first time, they won't need any more directions. It'll be self-explanatory, so you don't really need the signs, that big of a sign, let's put it that way.
Chris Carmichael.
Mr. Chairman, I remember the contentious hearing we had on the same property about the original signs to this building and how problematic it seemed to be to the neighborhood. So I think we should stay consistent and stay within the bylaw.
Any other comments from board members before, if I see a public comment or ask for a public comment? Lake Cam, we have anyone on Facebook or?
Nothing on Facebook.
Anyone else on the call that's looking to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My name is Laurel St Pierre, I'm a resident and the treasurer at Woods Edge and I just want to say I appreciate the board's consideration for this and I agree fully that we do not need huge signs, so I do appreciate your consideration for this and I hope it's a no vote, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is Claire La Pointe, I'm the person who wrote you that letter and I appreciate your comments as well because as, as somebody said, once, one person drives through, they don't need those bigger signs, so six months from now, they're going to make them smaller because now everybody knows which way to go. You know, once we decide this, I mean, it's like that forever, so I appreciate again, all the comments and I'm, I think two square feet sign is sufficient, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, unless anyone else on the board or anyone else is looking to speak in the public indicates, so I will entertain a, a motion one way or the other, if anyone?
Is, is there anything that we can do to adjust or possibly revisit? Because if I'm not wrong, if you vote no, then we're not able to come back in front of the board for signs, correct?
You are, you are correct unless there's some substantial change or whatnot, I'll get you in a second, Chris. So, I mean, your options are we move forward, take a vote. If you feel you want to go back and make some revisions to the signs, although I will tell you my gut feeling based on what the comments have been, I, I, I believe the, the, the tea leaves are telling us that folks want the proprietor to, you know, follow the bylaw, which means you really don't have to come back for us if you're going to follow the bylaw. Or you could?
Withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah, I was going to say, withdraw without prejudice that way, if you do decide to come back at some later point, you could do that, you wouldn't have to wait the, the two years to your point.
All right, Bill, Sarah, are you both okay with, with a withdrawal without prejudice?
Yes, I think that's the way to go.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if we withdraw without prejudice, please?
Absolutely not, that's your, that's your call, so. Kathy or maybe Chris, if they're going to withdraw without prejudice, should, do we need to vote on that? We haven't had one of these in a while, I apologize.
Uh, yeah, you have to accept the withdrawal.
Chris, you want to make the motion to accept the withdrawal?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to extract, accept the motion to withdraw without prejudice from the petitioner.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, Jeff seconded it, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Chris Sheedy, I'm going to have you, you vote this time since we're missing a regular, so Nora Klein, yea or nay?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Chris Carmichael?
Yay.
Chris Sheedy?
Yay.
I am in favor of also withdrawing without prejudice, so petitions withdrawn. You decide to come back at a later date, go through the same process again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for hearing our case this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Now, we, we're going to be picking up the building permit on the 24th to start construction on this. If the signs are within the bylaws, we are within right to put them up, are we not?
Yes, you are, as long as, if they comply with the bylaws, you don't need to be?
Allowed, right, yes, as long as they stay within the bylaws. See the build permission, he'll guide you through it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Champ, Mr. Chairman, this is Laurel St Pierre again, I want to thank the board for the consideration for this as a resident of Woods Edge, thank you very much, you have a great night.
You're welcome, thank you, you too. Okay, so Kathy, I don't, we do not have any minutes to approve tonight, do we?
No.
Old business, anyone have any information or anything they wanted to submit regarding that sign bylaw information?
Do we have that, do we, do we have that available? We could review it real quick since that was a quick meeting, maybe we could spend a few minutes on it? Just a thought.
Uh, well, I'll, I'm, I'm open to spend a few minutes on, I know it was, it was quite a bit of information, so if, if folks have, if folks have actually reviewed it, we probably could, could comment on it, make some comments on it. I'll be honest with you, Chris, I have it sitting on my desk at the office and I made notes on it, I don't have it in front of me, but if, if we want to discuss it, have other members had a chance to look at it or make notations that have any comments regarding it?
I, I've not had a chance to, to review it yet.
There, I didn't know if you could just put it on the screen and take a look at it, but if, maybe, maybe the next meeting, we can schedule some time to review it?
But yeah, hang on, Kathy, what's, what's the planning board's intention on, on the comments for this? Are they still tossing this around or are they, is there a deadline they had? I don't remember there being a deadline.
No, they, they haven't discussed it, yeah, I mean.
Going in front of town meeting, right? So we'd have to wait until the next town meeting before, yeah, so I, you know, if it's not on the agenda for Monday night, then?
Yeah, no.
No, my, Chris, my concern was if, if it's something they've kind of let go and it's fallen down the ladder, so to speak, you know, they, the planning board's driving the bus on this. So if they still have it on their radar, then why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we actually make it an agenda item for the next, next meeting? And if you can do us a favor, Kathy, and keep us honest and maybe a week ahead of time, remind us, we're going to discuss this or at least, you know, be ready to make comments?
Yeah, you know, you know what I'll do, I'll send it out again when I send out the applications because I've been trying to get those out earlier, so.
Okay, yeah, no, you're doing a good job at that, I appreciate it, so. Okay, any other old business to come up? Any new business? Hey, Chris, in this, oh, Kathy, yes.
Just if you want to discuss how you want to hold meetings going forward.
That's probably a good thing to talk about, huh? So, um, what is the pleasure of the board? I personally am fine either way. I do think that at some point, we, you know, I think it's, it's convenient to do it this way, but I do think it may be easier for some folks in the public to actually have in-person meetings. Obviously, based on the governor's legislation of the, the legislature's legislation, we're able to do this for a while longer, but what's, what's the consensus of the, of the thought of the, of, of board members? I don't want to unilaterally just decide next month, hey, we're meeting in person. What's, what's everyone's feelings, come to level?
I like the pants optional kind of.
I, I'm fine either way.
I really don't care, I'm in front of a meeting all week anyways, it doesn't make any difference.
Campo and Sheedy, what do you guys, are the preference one?
I'm still trying to un, unsee the image Chris created for me.
You, you can work on that yourself, I, I?
I'm good either, I'm good either, I'm good either way. Personally, I like, I don't know, I, I like the energy of in person, but Zoom is convenient, so.
I've heard some feedback from other towns and they're saying that they're actually getting more participation because we've made it more accessible. So if they do decide to go back and, and we have to appear in person after this extended, if it, at least we could extend it to a hybrid version to make it more accessible, I think that's, that should be on the table as well.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that, I don't personally have an issue with that, that's more, you know, logistically, that would be. Yeah, that's, I mean, that I don't personally have an issue with that. That's more, you know, logistically, that would be. I think that would be up to Lake Camp to figure out if they could they could provide us with that, but. Campo?
Yeah, what's the physical setup like there? Because I'm kind of used to looking at all this stuff on other computers next to me. You guys normally binders and read it, or do you bring a computer?
Chris hasn't been on this since we went remote, so, uh, no, it's it's old fashioned, Chris. It's like, you know, when you went to Assawampset when you were a kid. Just bring your paper and put it on your desk in front of you and you have space because we all sit at one big long conference table. But that doesn't, they do have Wi-Fi, so you can bring your your laptop, your computer with you. I don't think you'd be able to put up multiple screens, but.
I'm just thinking like when you reference certain sections in the bylaws, you like physically going through pages to go back and read things or?
Normally, yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we could start the conversation about getting a large screen TV at the library or another meeting room. So that we could have a hybrid option. I know other towns are looking into that, so.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we say, but my. My, the impression is we're fine either way. No one here is concerned about going back, having in-person meetings. Having said that. Kathy, if you don't mind, maybe we can put an inquiry into the. Board of Selectmen and and Lake Cam, I'm not sure exactly who we we put it into to ask what their plans are and we would encourage and would like to have a. Hybrid option unless you already know something, I don't know.
I do. Um, I know I did. My internet's kind of not so good right now. Um, I did talk to Jose. I'm not sure if that option's available yet. But that would be through the police station. But the thing with that is meetings still are supposed to be socially distanced, so it would be tougher because it's a large board. For you guys to like spread out to meet that requirement. The library will be available starting in in August. At least there you do have more room. You couldn't make that social distance. But it it doesn't have those capabilities for a hybrid meeting.
Okay, so I think based on that information, at this point, what I'll have to do is we'll have to play it by ear, I guess. And if we have, you know, multiple petitions that potentially would have. You know, a butter is and and it would draw a crowd. We will probably revert to what we're doing right now, because if we're going to have to comply with the social distance six feet apart thing. That may 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 not work well. Again, depending on how many hearings we have and and what the hearings are about. If we, like, tonight would be a perfect example, if we only had two petitions and they didn't look like. That we're going to have that many folks showing up. Then we'll we'll we should probably start having in-person meetings again and again, encouraged Lake Ham and the selection to. To move forward with providing us whatever we need so we can have some hybrids to, it sounds like everyone's point is that we're going to have more folks involved. That we make it easier for them to be involved. Anyone just.
Do you feel like the participants have an easier time of displaying things when it's online? Because it seems like every meeting so far, like they're sharing their screens and they can kind of zoom in on things easy and. I don't know how you guys kind of did that stuff in the past, do they like?
They would print out big, I mean, Jeff, Jeff can tell you. I mean, they, you know, they bring big kind of storyboard type things with them and they.
I mean, we go back into the nineteenth century. We really should be staying within the twenty-first century and try to get a big screen and 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 post it all on that. You know, I mean, this this has been a great opportunity to move forward, so I think we should seize it and move and run with it.
So.
Quite a few other towns have the big screen and basically what we do is we give the. A disk drive to the planning board or Board of Health or Concom, and what they do is. When we present the meeting, just having had them boards now, we just bring it up in a big screen TV. And then you that the same place you could turn and put that on, you know, on Lake, Lake Cam. And they could put it out as.
And it's not like we're the only board that's going to use it. So every public hearing will be using the same situation. So I think we should petition the town to appropriate the funds to move forward in this direction. If we have to increase fees by a few bucks, then so be it. It it benefits the town.
All right, well, why don't we do this? Like I said, we'll we'll play it by ear for the foreseeable future based on the social distancing aspect of what we're still going to have to comply with. On in-person meetings as far as whether we have them or not, but what I'll do is, you know, between Kathy and I, we will work on advocating to to. You know, bring that technology into play and and figure out a way to do some hybrid meetings as well as making it easier to, you know, display stuff electronically on screens. As opposed to having to have folks bring in big, you know, large poster boards type of a thing.
So just one last piece of information. So I just sat in a meeting this afternoon. There are grant money available because of the COVID funding. Just for this technology kind of advancement. So there is large amounts of money available, so I think we should. Apply for it or the town should. And if I have to help write the grant, I will.
I'm glad you volunteered to do that, Chris. I will let them know.
Pants optional.
No, you got to wear your pants.
Oh, I can't can't sign it that way. All right.
All right, before we go down that rabbit hole too far, I will I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
We have a second. Okay. I guess we got to do the roll call. That will be the one good thing about in-person meetings that we don't have to do these roll call votes. Nora?
Hi.
Jeff? Hi. Chris Campo?
Hi.
Chris Carmichael?
Hi.
Chris Sheedy? Now I'm in favor as well. Meeting is adjourned at, I don't know, what time is it? Seven thirty-six.